Avel, that's you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting. Tonight, we're actually going to start with an interview for Boards and Commissions before our main event here. If Mr. Robert Hines is here, he can please come up to the table. How you doing?
Great. And yourselves?
Doing well. Thank you for coming in tonight. As you can see, we have a full house. We won't keep it too long. So, you know, we have many openings for many boards, advisory boards and committees. We have some great committees in this township with great volunteers.
I was actually participating in the one last night with zoning.
Zoning Hearing Board. Oh, good for you. I watched it.
So I watched them all.
Awesome. Good for you.
You're hired.
I don't know how else to respond to that. Thanks. With that, the way we do these things is give you a minute to introduce yourself. Tell us what you're interested in, a little bit about yourself. If there's a specific committee that you're interested in, let us know. And then we'll just run down the dais here, ask a few questions, we'll get you out of here.
Sure thing. I think I should probably give you a little bit of.
Oh, you may need to turn on your microphone. I'm getting the red light flashing at me.
There you go. Is that better?
Sounds good.
Okay, so a little bit about myself. I'm a chemical engineer by education. Have been pharmaceutical engineer by career path. I've done project engineering, process engineering through my work. So I have a good understanding of dealing with municipalities and getting projects accomplished. So my letter of intent identified three positions that I might be interested in. The park and rec, the golf committee, and the zoning hearing board. Those are, you know, kind of where I thought I could do the most good and also, you know, use a lot of my background. So my, like I said, the manufacturing and production and construction, I've done that throughout my career. Even before that, I was doing electrical work with my brother who was an electrical contractor, had his own business. So I was working for him during summers during college and the like. For the golf, I've been an avid golf fan for all of my life. You know, my dad started taking me out on the golf courses, you know, early on. And just never really gave that up. The park and rec, I've done, you know, a lot of the work with kids through scouting. And I've also done a lot of coaching early on with my two kids. So I've been married for 38 years and have two adult children now.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Why don't I start down your way, Mr. Robert?
Sure. Thank you so much for throwing your name in the hat. We appreciate it. I really don't have any questions. I think your background would be well served on the zoning hearing board. So thanks again.
Go right ahead.
Just a quick one. Have you had any experience with the zoning hearing board as an applicant over the years at all?
So as an applicant, no.
Okay.
I have gotten my zoning, you know, I never needed to go to the board. I've gotten my permits and they were approved. From my last residence, I was down in Florida and was part of the architectural review committee that was part of the HOA. So I had, you know, some requirements to understand what the DCCRs were and how, you know, covenants needed to be maintained.
Awesome. That's all I have. Is Ross?
I have no questions, but thank you very much for applying and getting involved.
And one of the zoning hearing board liaison, I'm sure she's.
Well, we've met before because he attends golf as well quite regularly. So thank you very much.
All right. There you go. That was easy. So the way this works, we've conducted a bunch of interviews over the last several weeks and even a couple of months. We have some more coming up over the next few weeks. At the end of this meeting, we do have an agenda item to appoint or reappoint people to Boards and Commissions. It could happen then, or it might happen at a future meeting once we get more interviews done. So we just know who's who and where everyone wants to fit. But that's up to the Board will tell me what they want to do by the end of this meeting.
No worries.
So with that, thank you for your service and coming out and keep watching the meetings.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. All right. With that, I'll call the meeting to order. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quick roll call. Supervisor Blundy.
Here.
Supervisor Ross.
Here.
Supervisor Lewis.
Here.
Supervisor McCartney.
Present.
We are all five here. Community announcements, item four on the agenda. Reminder, during this portion of the agenda, residents and youth organizations may call in to make a special announcement or contact the township at admin@lmt.org to request a special announcement to be added to the agenda. The Friends of Five Mile Woods are looking for volunteers to help with Five Mile Woods cleanup. They held the second Saturday of the month at 9:00 a.m. from July until October. If you have some free time and would love to volunteer, we would love your help. Please come in comfortable clothes. If you don't mind getting dirty and bring along your work gloves and water, stay hydrated. If you have any questions, you can email Monica Tierney at monicatierney@lmt.org. August only pool membership sales are now open. To register, visit lmt.org. Additionally, for those of you in the room, there's a handout by the door from the Bucks County Free Library that is showing upcoming events in August of 2025. Some of those events include the Summer Quest Special Event at the Elmwood Park Zoo, Family Storytime at different days throughout the month, big games at different days throughout the month, which includes life-size fun for the whole family. Play jumbo versions of your favorite classic games. Wednesday, August 13th, it's actually my anniversary, there's an adult afternoon book club. Thursday, the 14th, there's a drop-in-and-play for toys for kids. And the 15th, there's a craft meetup. You can find all this at calendar.buxlib.org. Again, calendar.buxlib.org. Any other supervisors have any other announcements they'd like to make?
Dan, can I just throw one in?
Please do.
Sure. This August, this August Saturday, the 9th, at the tech school over in Fairless Hills, it's a hazardous waste collection. So if you have paint and all those other things that you don't know what to do with, batteries, degreasers, they are collecting them. No registration required from 8:30 to 2:00. The Blundys will be there because we've been storing paint. So use it. It's a good time to clean up.
Excellent. Thank you for that. All right, let's close out. Item number five is public comment on non-agenda items. So if you have a comment on something that's not on the agenda, we ask that you come up to the podium here, state your name, whether or not you live in the township. Please, please keep it to three minutes. And if someone else has made a comment that you've, that, if someone else has already made a comment that you might want to make, please let them, please be considerate of time. With that, if there's any public comment, please come up to the microphone.
Hello, dear. My name is June Farley. I live in Yardley Run, 1289 Fountain Road. I just wanted to say thank you to David Kratzser for being so respectful and getting back to me via email. And I want to thank the Board for considering excluding Yardley Run from the Boma deer hunt. I mean, obviously, you know our concerns and passionate about that. And I did watch the January 4th meeting via the video. So I appreciate that. And you acknowledged, David, the confusion that was in the pamphlet that we received. So.
That is, that is correct. Yes.
Yeah. I just wanted to thank you for being so respectful.
Oh, you're welcome, true.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You don't have to raise your hand. Just come on up.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Similar comment. My name's Rob Ottenheimer. My wife and I live at 1309 Fountain Road. We're original owners. Last Saturday, we received the wonderful publication, which brings all kinds of questions into play. But we were busy like the rest of you, but we happened to look at it because she hurt her hip and we weren't going anywhere. So in looking at the publication, we found that Yardley Run was in fact listed. And we were quite surprised to see that because we had no notification. And I guess we're supposed to look at township meeting notes when you schedule things in June, which in 2023 was scheduled in September regarding Boma. So I don't know if I need to talk to Katie and say, hey, if anytime Boma comes up, please let us know what we're supposed to do. But this brought back memories of 2023. And of course, you folks remember that pretty well, I think. And of course, the eventual outcome was not hunting at Yardley Run, which is great. However, if I go like I did today and search for Boma or deer on the website, I find 2023 information. So the township website is woefully inadequate and especially.
Well, they're, they're, sorry. No, I was just going to say that the intent is to, once we get closer to deer season, again, there is a, there was a mistake in that article that was published. But we will be posting on the township website as a news item. And also will be distributing it through social media channels. So that is, that will happen. That is, that is correct.
Okay. We went back and looked, and I think June misspoke when she said January 4th, whatever of 2025. It was June 4th of 2025. Because after we received the publication being Saturday, there was no one to call. And it was like, hey, go to the website, start looking.
Okay.
Ultimately, we were able to see things on YouTube, which is really nice that it was there. However, there were a couple of moments that were sort of disconcerting. One was discussion by one of the supervisors regarding taking the temperature of the room regarding adding Lindenhurst and Yardley Run back in. I think that was you, sir?
Yes, if I remember correctly.
Good. And discussion about lame duck supervisors. Does that mean, I'm sorry, you're not going to be a supervisor?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, anyhow.
I've been called worse.
Going back on that, we can all appreciate a moment of levity that appeared very unprofessional in that our efforts from 2023 were something to laugh about, even though we were pleased with the result of the amended 2025 agreement with Boma. So my kudos for the crossing it out on the 2025. But then this brought up the issue of who's responsible for the fall's publication because I used to be in publishing and I know that these things aren't put together overnight. So if someone had to say, hey, let's put that in there, it did say it was a program notice. So we didn't know if that was, hey, we're going to be hunting in your backyard, especially when we saw it listed there. So my belief is that you folks can do better. I'm hoping that you will. I'm glad that Yardley Run is off the list. And I'm hoping that that is a continued thing. And in pleasing, in closing, I know you guys all can do better, and ladies, by the way. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
It's a typo, right? Okay.
Well, guess who I am? I'm Pam Ottenheimer, his wife. And we wrote our little blurbs separately. So we have a lot of things in common. But I think mine does bring out why we were so against it to begin with. And he talked about what happened afterwards. So I do kind of bring that up. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak and tell you I am grateful that you have continued to protect the residents of Yardley Run against those bowmen who would invade the woods, which our children, where our children like to play, as well as they take a shortcut through to each other's, each other's homes after school. I am grateful that no friendly amendment to the list hulling places, as suggested in jest, I suppose, at the June 4th meeting of supervisors, was not seriously considered at the time. I am grateful that no, that despite no one proofed the final list of places to be used for deer killing this early and next year, and through next year. And that, I guess it was Mr. Grenier, who asked whether Yardley Run Lindenhurst track was to in fact be scratched off the list again. And the Boma representative hesitantly said, oh, yes. For that, we can feel again safe in our homes a little bit more. I wish I had realized that Boma was going to continue to present the list with Yardley Run ever-present on the said list to be approved year after year after year. So I have a solution. I would like to propose that Yardley Run, our citizens and children who live directly adjacent to this small wooded tract titled Yardley Run slash Lindenhurst, have the tract removed from the friendly list in perpetuity so that we may continue to live without fear of hunters directly behind our homes. Our initial presence at the September 22nd meeting in 2023, as a result, as a result of our seeing our adjoining track was now to be open to deer killing for five months. I believe all of you remember our reaction. In case you forgot, we had a nice petition and many testimonials that night. Again, we thank you for helping us to save ourselves and our children from a potential tragedy in the woods at that time. And we want that safeguard to continue. So our plan for us, continuing with the current results as it is, is to carefully read all of the supervisor meeting agendas from now on every month and be ready to mobilize our group to attend whenever the Bowman group may be presenting a list of permitted hunting places that contain Yardley Run Lindenhurst in the future. We have no choice in the matter, as that's the situation as it now exists. But thank you for all you do. We respect the fact that Boma exists and we don't want, nor do we need them in our lane. And we will remind everyone of that.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment tonight? Come on up.
So can you hear me?
Yes. As a reminder, just please state your name and whether or not you're a resident.
Yes, yes. Yogesh Doshi, 805 Kent Drive. And I've been the resident of this township for 18, 20 years now. Little bit about personal myself. I have a degree in chemical engineering, master's in environmental engineering. I recently retired. And one of the lifetime goal, personal goal was to make my home carbon neutral. And for that, I applied for the permit and I have the permit. So that's not the reason I'm here. So that's not the reason I'm here, though. Just want to share my experience for last two weeks with the township inspector. So two weeks back, the contractors did insulation. Like I said, I go well above the requirements of any rule or laws. So I asked for spray foam insulation, you know, R49 on the top and the ground space and everywhere. And then there was a family emergency, I had to go to North Carolina. Meantime, the inspector said, and then I said that, can you come for inspection next day? He could not come, but the meantime, the drywall people did the drywall. But there were numerous holes and the pictures taken during the process that you can clearly see the insulation is done. The guy came next day and wrote the violation. I shared all the picture, I said, there are holes there, you can see. And I don't, I don't think anybody would spend that kind of money for insulation. I did only to become carbon neutral. This guy didn't see that way. He wrote the violation, I paid the reinspection fee. Come today, and then I came back yesterday, I paid the reinspection fee. Today, the inspector came, and he said, oh, drywall taped and speckled prior to inspection and cannot verify screw pattern along the seam. My contractor was there, I said, it just speckled it, what do you want me to do? He said, redo the entire screws and then the respecle, just for him. I mean, why can't we use the simple brain? He said that you are cutting the corners here. What corners am I cutting? I'm spending $200,000 just for the environment. My entire home has a Tesla solar roof, the new 14 kilowatt of new solar. How many, I don't think there is a single home in entire Lower Makefield which is carbon neutral. And I invite anyone who wants to come and see the house. I leave, I just don't walk environment. I, I live with environment. What kind of violations are you giving? And then just because he doesn't see the screws, I have to call somebody, spend $500, put the screws again, speckle again, reinspection fee, come back? I mean, simple things, why can't we use the simple brain?
Thank you for your comment. One, I'd like to, love to see your house.
Please come, and I invite all of you.
Yeah, no, I'm of like mine.
Anyone, please come.
Yeah, no, it's, careful what you ask for. Mr. Kratzer, are you familiar with this issue?
I am not at this point, but I, I'm happy to, happy to follow up, yep.
If we could have our township manager follow up with staff?
Absolutely.
And that he can get a little more info.
And by the way, I also work for the, I worked for EPA for 35 years. Most of the power plants in New Jersey, they were under my section, and I know, most of you know Ellen Dresser. Ellen Dresser and I worked together for all 35 years with, with EPA. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm sure you'll do something about this.
Any other public comment this evening? Anyone online, on the phone?
No.
Thank you. All right. With that, do we need to do number, oh, yeah, I guess we can do number six.
It was a third party. Yeah, 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 so I gotta, gotta look into it.
With that, we have, as I think most people here know, but for those watching at home and who may not know sitting in the room, we are lucky enough tonight to be formally promoting three of our officers to, we have two lieutenants and one captain that we're promoting this evening officially. They're all here, so we're going to, I got some bios to read, so I, I don't think we'll embarrass you too much. And then we have the oath of office for all three of them with some certificates here. So with that, I'll, I'll start with the bios. First up, we have Lawrence Hillman has been a police officer in Bucks County for over 26 years, serving with the Lower Makefield Township Police Department since 1999. Since beginning his employment with LMT PD, Hillman has served in various assignments and ranks, including patrol officer, corporal, and sergeant. Lieutenant Hillman has served as an accident investigator, a member of the South Central Emergency Response Team, firearms and tasering instructor, and a member of the department's motor patrol unit. Lieutenant Hillman is also a member of Bucks County Special Operations Dive Team. Lieutenant has received numerous awards and commendations, including awards for lifesaving and letters of commendation. He also holds a bachelor's degree in administrative justice from Pennsylvania State University, his ACT 120 certification from the Pennsylvania State Police Academy, and has completed numerous training programs in law enforcement. Up next, we have Brian Omler has been a police officer in Bucks County for over 31 years, serving with the Lower Makefield Township Police Department since 1996. Since beginning his employment with LMT PD, Omler has served in various assignments and ranks, including patrol officer, community policing slash deer instructor, detective and detective sergeant. Lieutenant Omler has served as the police department's accreditation manager since the department received its initial accreditation with the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association 2014. Lieutenant Omler has received numerous awards and commendations, including awards of heroism, merit, and distinguished unit citation. He also holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from the Pennsylvania State University and has completed numerous training programs in law enforcement and investigation. Last but not least, Tim Reeves, native of Bucks County, was born and raised in Bristol Borough. He graduated from Bishop Egan High School. He was hired with the LMT PD in 1999. Prior to that, he was a police officer in Dewey Beach, Delaware, Ocean City, Maryland, Bristol Borough, and Pendel Borough. Captain Reeves' assignments have included K-9, narcotics, bike patrol, police explorer coordinator, Falls Township Police Youth Academy instructor, and field training officer program coordinator. Captain Reeves is an assistant commander of the Bucks County Major Incident Response Team and is the Lower Makefield Emergency Management Coordinator. He's held the rank of corporal, sergeant, and captain. Captain Reeves served in the US Army Reserve and deployed to Fallujah, Iraq in 2005 in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom, where he was awarded the Bronze Star Medal. Captain Reeves has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and a master's degree in public safety administration from St. Joseph's University in Philadelphia, and is a graduate of Northwestern University School of Police Staff and Command. Pretty impressive stuff, guys. With that, where's, where's chief? There, how can I miss you, chief? If you'd come up, and everyone, if you'd like to join me here. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Lawrence Hillman.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth?
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Code of Ordinances of the Township of Lower Makefield?
And the Code of Ordinances of the Township of Lower Makefield.
And that I will discharge the duties?
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of lieutenant of police in Lower Makefield Township?
Of lieutenant of police in Lower Makefield Township.
With fidelity?
With fidelity.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Go later. All right. Hey, Brian. Ready when you are. I'll try not to mix you up, don't worry. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Brian Omler.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth?
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Code of Ordinances of the Township of Lower Makefield?
And the Code of Ordinances of the Township of Lower Makefield.
And I will discharge the duties?
I will discharge the duties.
Of lieutenant of police?
Of lieutenant of police.
In Lower Makefield Township?
In Lower Makefield Township.
With fidelity?
With fidelity.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's Captain Reeves.
That's Omler. That's Omler. Yeah. Come look at me. Come look at me in the end.
Everyone ready? All right. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Timothy Reeves.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth?
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Code of Ordinances of the Township of Lower Makefield?
And the Code of Ordinances of the Township of Lower Makefield.
And I will discharge the duties?
I will discharge the duties.
Of lieutenant of police?
Of lieutenant of police.
In Lower Makefield Township?
In Lower Makefield Township.
With fidelity?
With fidelity.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's Captain Reeves.
That's Omler. That's Omler. Yeah. Yeah, watch, come look at me. Come look at me in the end.
Everyone ready? All right. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Timothy Reeves.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth?
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Code of Ordinances of the Township of Lower Makefield?
And the Code of Ordinances of the Township of Lower Makefield.
And I will discharge the duties?
I will discharge the duties.
Of lieutenant of police?
Of lieutenant of police.
In Lower Makefield Township?
In Lower Makefield Township.
With fidelity?
With fidelity.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's Captain Reeves.
That's Omler. That's Omler. Okay. She's going. All right. Yeah. Yeah, watch, come look at me. Come look at me in the end.
Everyone ready? All right. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Timothy Reeves.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth?
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Code of Ordinances of the Township of Lower Makefield?
And the Code of Ordinances of Lower Makefield Township.
And that I will discharge the duties of captain?
And I will discharge the duties of captain.
Of police in Lower Makefield Township?
Of police in Lower Makefield Township.
With fidelity?
With fidelity.
Yes.
I got you.
Thank you. And I believe we have a birthday this evening?
Oh.
Happy 70th birthday, Mom.
Oh, you're right.
You should've said "there."
You should've said "there."
Oh, jeez. It's better than singing. You wouldn't want me to sing. I said "me," "me."
So we're not singing for Timmy's mom?
Yeah. Later. Please.
You gonna sing, James?
Boy, there's a consented kid. I know. Please.
You gonna sing, James?
Boy, there's a consented kid. I know. Please. I know. 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 Yeah. All right. We all good to reconvene?
Yes.
All right. So congratulations to our officers there. Moving on to item number seven on the agenda. These are consent agenda items. After reviewing the items, does any member of the board wish to remove any? Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right. Got a motion and a second. As consent agenda, so there's no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Item number eight, community development. Tonight, we have Open Spaces and Historic Places coming, I believe. Mr. Marshall, he'll be presenting.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we'll have presenting for the Historic Resource Survey, Jeff Marshall from Open Spaces Historic Places. Also with us is Megan McNish, who's the Pennsylvania State Historic Preservation Office. I think she's the Certified Local Government Coordinator. Eastern Region, yes. So she'll be sort of explaining the purposes of a Historic Resource Survey. You may recall that we did get a grant to conduct the Historic Resource Survey. It covered 90% of the cost for the survey. That grant application was put together by our Historical Commission, who have been working together with our consultant to get this done. The grant was the Pennsylvania State Historic Preservation Office Certified Local Government Grant. And this is an action that was contemplated in our comprehensive master plan. This is one of the recommendations for action was to update our Historic Resource Survey, which was last updated in 2007. So I'm gonna turn it over just to Kathy Hanville, our Historical Commission Chair, just to give a little briefing.
Yeah, and just for those watching at home, this is specifically related to the survey that was completed under the grant that was provided. We may be using this information later in the year to address other issues that come out of this. But tonight's presentation is strictly related to the resources that were evaluated.
Okay, sorry. Sorry, hi, my name is Kathy Hanville, and I'm the Chair of the Historical Commission. I want to thank you for letting us present the results from the Historic Resource Survey of pre-1900 buildings that was conducted this year. My remarks will be brief, as I know you want to hear from the experts. Sitting with me is Jim Sedd or Jeff Marshall and Megan McNish. After my remarks, Megan will speak on the context of our survey and how it fits in with others across the state. Then Jeff will speak on his process and answer any questions you might have. Our survey used our past Historic Resource Surveys from 1981, 96, 1996, and 2007 to create a list of historic properties for Jeff to review. This was a data-driven process where Jeff verified the age of the property, documented construction materials, noted alterations, assessed architectural integrity, and took photographs where possible. A level of significance was assigned based on historical significance, architectural integrity, and overall condition of the property. Historical significance is based on a property's architectural value, i.e. representation of how buildings were designed or built in the past and association with important events or persons who made a significant impact on the past. Since this survey is for Lower Makefield, we are looking at that history and events of our community. I will now let Megan explain how these factors work together and how we use best practices to compile the survey.
Good evening. As Kathy said, I'm Megan McNish. I'm the Eastern Region Community Preservation Coordinator for the Pennsylvania State Historic Preservation Office. In my role, I provide technical assistance and support to communities and organizations who are interested in historic preservation throughout the eastern part of the Commonwealth. And as Jim mentioned, a big part of that is working with certified local governments in the eastern part of the state, and Lower Makefield Township is one of those communities. As a part of the CLG program's ongoing performance standards, CLG communities agree to keep up-to-date information about historic resources in their community and make this information accessible to the public. Per the guidelines, up-to-date is defined as undertaking Historic Resource Surveys approximately every 10 years. Historic Resource Surveys ultimately seek to identify historic properties in a community, provide data to make informed planning decisions, and keep your records up-to-date. Gathering information about historic resources and data about historic resources does not obligate municipalities to act. However, these surveys facilitate a data-driven approach to community and historic preservation planning. This is a tried and tested method used by communities and organizations across the country, not just here in Pennsylvania. Through the CLG-funded survey, data collected will be uploaded to PA Share, which is the PHMC's online data management portal for historic resource information. While this first survey will not capture all properties 50 years old or older in the township, future CLG grants could help fund this work. When communities decide to act on the data they've collected through their Historic Resource Surveys, they ultimately evaluate them based on two primary factors: significance and integrity. Significance establishes why a property is important. From a local planning perspective, what is significant in one community can be different from what is significant in another. For example, if your community had many farms and barns historically, but they're rapidly disappearing, those remaining examples may be significant and important to preserve. Conversely, in a rural agricultural community where there are many farms, you may want to ask further questions about what remains. Things like, what is representative of important periods in our community's history? Are there particular architectural forms or types that are unique? Or do these properties represent change over time? Another factor in evaluating historic resources is integrity, or the ability of a historic property to convey its significance. Integrity is based on several elements, including location, design, materials, workmanship, feeling, association, and setting. Historic properties do not need to retain all elements to retain their integrity. And an easy example of integrity would be a historic property where a significant person lived. Often, we ask the question, would they recognize this property if they were to visit it today? The answer is yes, then the property likely retains integrity. Integrity is, however, something that can change over time. Inappropriate alterations can be removed, historic features can be restored or uncovered, resulting in a property recapturing lost integrity. A final factor that communities may consider is condition. Generally speaking, condition is considered separate from integrity, although condition can impact integrity. I think that's pretty much as clear as mud. But I think an example can help in this instance. If we use a Queen Anne-style residence as our example, Queen Anne-style homes are characterized by opulent architectural details. If that home has had all of its windows and architectural details removed or covered, it's likely that if that happened in the recent past, the condition of the property may be very good, but all of the elements that make it significant are gone, meaning it no longer retains integrity. Conversely, a house that's been left to rot and decay but hasn't been touched can be in very poor condition but retain integrity. It's a complicated thing. And that's why ultimately governing bodies often rely on the recommendations made by historic preservation consultants and historical commissions and HARVs. These boards and commissions rely on the framework that I've described, as well as their knowledge and expertise in local history and historic preservation. And I feel it incumbent upon me to shout out your Historical Commission a little bit. They're a wonderful group. I've worked with them pretty extensively over the last three years. They're not only extremely dedicated to the work that they do here in this township. You may recall that they won the SHPO's Community Initiative Award for their work at Slate Hill Cemetery within the last few years. They've also really gone above and beyond, attempting to educate themselves, taking degree-level courses in historic preservation. And that's a huge asset that not all communities can boast. So I wanted to make sure they got their kudos. That being said, unless you have any questions about the general context of the information that I've provided, I'll be happy to turn things over to Jeff Marshall.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Good evening, again. My name is Jeff Marshall. I am the consultant that the township's hired. I have been doing historic preservation work in Bucks County since before the bicentennial. So I am older than most of the buildings I drive by, unfortunately. So what we have done here is a building inventory, you know, really a reconnaissance level of taking what has been done in the past and then using the state's guidelines. We went through a five or six-step analysis or process, which I will go through real briefly. You've heard a lot of the things already, so I don't want to be redundant. First thing we did was we had to determine our survey methodology. As you heard Megan say, the state generally looks, has communities look at buildings that are over 50 years old. We can't get that done here in any foreseeable amount of time in Lower Makefield. That's just not gonna happen. So then the Historic Commission, with some consultation with the state, we thought we'd start with the easiest thing, which is to take the surveys that have been done before. And one of the first surveys was done by Heritage Conservancy, and I hate to admit it, but I actually was doing it back in 1980, whenever. And so at that time, we took the 1891 Atlas, and we used that. We went out, we identified on a map where they should be, and physically went out and looked for them. And then this survey, we decided we would use that as our baseline. And as part of that inventory, as we saw properties that were younger than that but had obvious significant terms of their architectural style, their association with a prominent person or event that we knew about, or in some cases, designed by an architect, they are added to this list. So that's what was the survey methodology was done. And then literally drove out and took photographs of every building, mainly the house and accessory buildings that we could doing that. We've also done a limited amount of background research using old maps, aerial photographs. As far as the newer properties, I actually went to the county, and I have copies of all the plan books that were done from 1903 through 1940. So now we are clustering where the subdivision developments are. So when if this comes to Phase Two, we can use that as another baseline. The other thing that we're doing is doing historic research on individual properties, trying to determine age. A building that was built in 1740 is arguably more significant than one built in 1940 because it's a rare surviving example. So knowing the age based on historic documentation is something that is the last phase of the project we are working on now. We're going back and looking at a lot of those to try to make sure we understand them. Because if you understand the age and you put it in context, is it the oldest? Is it the most well-preserved? Is it one of two, five, or 20 similar examples? Then as part of it, we have also gone through and looked at what was already listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Heritage Conservancy has a local register of historic places that has a number of properties. So those were all organized. And then we physically went out and did the fieldwork, and then have taken photographs. And those have all been uploaded to the state's PA Share, I think it's called, website. About 900 photographs, I think, have been uploaded. And last thing is now, we've prepared a report that has an evaluation, which I'll come back to in one moment. And the final thing we will do is do a survey report, a final report for the state, because as a funder, they will require that. So rankings, that's the thing that is the hardest thing to really put into specifics. As you heard what Megan said, integrity is a vague notion. It's one of these things where it's hard to describe, but you just know if it has it or you know if it doesn't, kind of thing. So we have, a group of us have come up with three different tiers or classes of resources that we're surveying. One, properties that are on or eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. They have been established by the state and the federal government as being worthy of preservation. So they get number ones. Number two are those that are potentially eligible. In most cases, listing on the National Register is completely voluntary. So there may be dozens of beautiful historic resources out there that have never been submitted because the owners never felt like doing it. So that's number two. And associated with that are ones that people have voluntarily listed with the Heritage Conservancy's Register of Historic Places, and their Historical Review Board has said these are least local significance and worthy of preservation.
Jeff, could I ask you a clarifying question on item number two? Have any of those under number two been part of some sort of cultural resources survey as part of the Section 106 process? Or are these different evaluations from that formal process?
There are a number that, that's how these things actually get reviewed by the state, is typically through Section 106, yes. So there have been a number. And the other thing is the state also reviews as part of the land division subdivision, land development, I'm sorry, process, the section, you know, Act 537 reviews and others, that what is the impact on a historic resource? So applicants, developers typically have to submit material. So there are reviews. So not just 106, which is the federal licensed and authorized thing, but there's a parallel state program.
Most state permits require you to do a, what I, in the, I work in this world. So in the business, we talk about 106 reviews, but it covers federal and state when we talk about it. So they've been through, they've had some level of review by, okay. I just want to make sure we're clear on one versus two.
Those, like I say, are mandated as subdivision processes. So, and number three is all other historic resources that were of age to be potentially significant. So that was, as you can imagine, the largest number of properties that were here, are here, as a historian and as a preservation, I would love to see preserved. But the Historic Commission has come to the conclusion that that's not the township's responsibility to try to enforce that at this time or to get involved in that, because there are just too many, and that we want to focus on the ones that we think are the most important. And you also heard about integrity being reversible in certain cases. So that's what we've done. You know, if, out of the number of we've seen, I think, as my math is bad, about 12 or 13% of the properties that I surveyed were ranked number one. And about 30%, 31% were ranked number two. So over half of the properties were historic, or historical, related to history and old, but did not seem to meet the criteria for a Class 1 or 2. You know, they're just good examples of a type of building that have become very ubiquitous. You know, and like I say, it's hard to make the case of why it would be an example to be held up as a, you know, prime example of a certain type or style or period or age. So that's what we've done. And the idea of, you know, this criteria A, B, and C are 1, 2, and 3. This is based, you know, on other surveys done throughout the Commonwealth and nation, this previous standard practice to do it this way. Many communities have long involved 10-step analyses of how you do it. But at the end of the day, it's like, you look at it, and you see, has it maintained its integrity? Is it a good example of a period or style or type? And then you enhance that by doing basic historic research. Was it associated with a significant person or event? And that's how we've come up with the list.
I'm curious, do you have, I thought I had seen preliminary maps of the sites that were evaluated? Is that available?
Yeah, internally, we've generated that, so we've taken the list. So we do have that, yes.
Yeah, Dan has, other Dan has a map.
Because one of the things, you know, I like to look at these things spatially as well, because we might end up seeing clusters of these homes or buildings that may say, hey, you know, that kind of looks like a district, or it might be this or that. So it would be really nice to see, not only, I'm looking at the list that you produced because that was something we got in our packet, but like, a map that goes with that so that as we progress with other things and look at the evaluation, we can see it. Some people like lists, some people like maps, some people like listening. So that way, we can fully understand where these things are and how many we have, et cetera, et cetera.
I have a copy of the map on my computer. I don't know if there's a way to show it, or if you want to show it, or you want me to just email it to you, but I do have the email from Dan with the map.
Yeah, I think for now, it's just good that we have it.
Yeah, we do have it.
There's clearly clusters.
Yeah, that's good to know. Because that may spur some other ideas about what we do with this information moving forward.
You know, there's the hole in the donut which is Edgewood, because that's the biggest collection.
Right.
But then there are, across the township, obviously, the more rural, less developed it is, the greater likelihood they've been preserved. And there is, hopefully in the years to come, there is a cluster of really interesting houses along the Delaware River built by mostly prominent Trentonians, who didn't want to live in Trenton. And in terms of architecture and style, and really having a unique, you know, streetscape, that's something in the future that I think is for our successors to deal with.
Are you, in your, I know you haven't written your report yet. Obviously, you're presenting your initial findings and the data at this point. Is that gonna be something, are you gonna address that in your report?
I am gonna make a recommendation because there are some, you know, findings. The problem for the layperson, and even for people who do this, is that 50 years old is not that old when you talk about building. You talk about Levittown, and a lot of Toll Brothers, and a lot of things that are getting near that age. But, so it really takes, and the reason it's 50 years, it takes the time that these percolate, for the, on their stand, you know, is this, was this a fad? Was it important? What's the context? You have to understand it in terms of history. So we, you know, we're beginning to do that for pre-World War II more so. This township, like many, have a lot of buildings that we call an American Four-Square, which are square houses with a pyramid roof. Or they have a lot of bungalows, one-story with porches. Or the Dutch colonial revival, which look like they have a false gambrel roof. There's a lot of those. So they represent a period and style, but we can't document them all. So we're gonna try to figure out, how do we go through? And there are guidance documents now on how one evaluates 20th-century buildings for significance. That's why we focused on ones that, not to be a snob, that are built by architects grand and, you know, have maintained their integrity.
Appreciate that. How many, I tried to catch up on some of the meetings, the Historic Commission meetings, and I remember some number, I'm making up this number, but a little over 100 or so from initial lists that you looked at. And I think Dr. Heinz had given you some additional info. We had to give a shout-out to all the people that came in here when you all hosted residents to come in and provide more information, which was great. I thought all that community outreach was awesome. So I'm wondering, in total about, you don't have to hit the number on the head, but how many homes did you evaluate, do you think?
Evaluate, or like, were one or two? Because we also defined a one and two list, which was a little, I think 119 is sticking in my brain, but don't hold me to it.
Yeah, yeah.
I think he evaluated over 300 homes.
Okay. Just good for people to understand just the level of effort that went into this. Yeah. Oh, if you could put the microphone in front of you, I'm getting the red light flashing at me.
You know, there's two categories. Ones that were photographed and submitted to the state, and the other is a second whole tier of buildings that are 1900 to 1930 that were captured. And as we figure out what the next steps of the process might be, we didn't want to focus on those. We just wanted to capture them while we're driving around.
You have the opportunity.
And then we're focusing on the ones of pre-1900.
Okay. And then internally to the township, do we, we on the board or commission or even the residents at some point have access to? even the residents, at some point have access to some of these photos? And the narrative, well, the narrative isn't quite there yet, but is there, do we have a database, or is that-
How soon would it be up on PA Share with Elizabeth? Because I know he just, Elizabeth, Elizabeth is the person that's kind of getting it into the system.
She's our survey, above-ground survey coordinator. I am not sure where she is as far as processing time. But I would say in the next few months, it should be at the latest.
And for PA Share, PA Share has different levels of access depending on your background, right? I told you I worked in this industry. Does, and I'm not familiar with that part of the website, or that part of this. Is that something that the public has access to? Or is that something that only cultural, you know, cultural resources experts have access to, to see it once it's uploaded?
Some of the data will be accessible, some of it will not be. We are working on an updated external search called Searchlight. And that is, there's all kinds of systems. That is much more user-friendly for the general public. The same data that is available on PA Share to general users will also be available through Searchlight. And I'm happy to send links to all of those things to Kathy to distribute to everyone, and also to Jim, if there's a desire to put them on the township website.
I just think this could be a great educational tool.
No, I agree. And this is slightly off-topic, but I think close enough, is our volunteer, Dawn, who's in the audience, has been coordinating our archive project. And you may have seen, there's Dawn, you can wave, the big black file cabinet. So she has taken on the job, with her 93-year-old volunteer, of going through those cabinets, which were, I don't even want to talk about it, it was something like when I cleaned up my mom's house, and organize them by building and stuff. So that is like first level. We also have a very messy Google Drive with lots of information that we have been painstakingly organizing, using Dawn's wisdom. And all that to say is, we just, Dawn and Monica just submitted a grant to the historic-
Historic Archives Records, care.
For $5,000 to do a few things, one of which is to get a very upgraded past-perfect subscription, which then would turn this all public-facing. Our ultimate goal is to make everything public-facing. Probably take us a few years to get there, but, but that is the goal, including the homes. And then everything Jeff is uploading, he is also going to give it to us on a memory stick, and then we will get it in our drive and organize it over time.
Yeah, just, there is no match for that grant that was also just mentioned. So just so you're aware of that, if you're thinking that.
Yeah, no match.
Yeah, I don't mean to take all the questions, it's just interesting stuff. Do any board members have any questions or comments they'd like to?
Yeah, Mr. Marshall, if I could. So you had said 12% were ranked number one, 31% were ranked number two, and then the remainder, which I guess 57 is ranked three.
Number three, right.
Within each of those 1, 2, and 3 categories, we have good, fair, or poor, right? Do you have a rough, when the final report comes, can we have like a percentage breakdown for each category, what the good, fair, and poor is?
I have not done that analysis. And that's, you bring up a good point, because Kathy asked this question, because it seems counterintuitive. How can something be a 1 and be only fair, and something be a 3 and be good? And the answer is, as Megan alluded to, a house can be a wonderfully example of an early house that's just been, not been maintained. So it's, you know, it's like, it's fair. And that vice versa, it could be a wonderful example of a Dutch colonial revival that looks perfect, but it's really not that significant. So, but I've not done that breakdown yet.
Okay. And the reason for that is, I'm like, in terms of where we have properties that we're worried about, that are in private hands, that rank as poor, that could be higher value, that we put a watch on, right? Just so that we know.
I think, I think that the Class 1, 2, or 3 is more important than the-
Status.
Status in terms of changes. As Megan said, a lot of these things are reversible. Reversibility is the key. If you can reverse it, then that's great. Some changes that are made, you can't reverse, and no matter what it was before, it's no longer that. And the other thing that-
That was the 1970s, right? There's a lot of bad choices done.
Well, it's also in 1890s, 1900s, people took houses from the mid-18th century and put huge additions on them, and became, you know, summer homes, and rural homes for the wealthy. And there's a beautiful 18th century core that you really can't see, because it was swallowed up by a big Queen Anne-style or, you know, colonial revival house. So it's, it's very hard, because it's not like we're, again, use Levittown, where you know what they're supposed to look like. Everyone's different, and every house over 100 years has been altered by somebody.
Okay, awesome. Any other board members have?
So first of all, thank you for working on something where people who are alive live. I appreciate that. You know, this is, I don't, when it's finalized, if you could number the pages, because I want to refer to one of the houses, but I don't know how to say it other than flip, 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 flip. I think it came up last night in the zoning hearing meeting, actually. 1354 Oxford Valley Road, I think, is one of the homes on the-
Near 136.
Yeah. And the good news is that the builder is now talking about keeping it, but I don't, I don't actually know what that translates into. But I would really be, you know, interested in being able to understand more about that particular house as those conversations move forward. Because even last night, we were calling it the 1797 House, and then it was 1850, and it was all over the place. And I appreciate that's part of the problem with history.
136 Old?
1354 Oxford Valley, I think.
It's, I think it's 136 Old Oxford.
Oh, big, yeah, sorry.
There's a date stone on it.
Thank you, yes.
What was that date? I'm curious, sorry.
Hold on, let's see if I can find it over here. Yes, thank you, Jim.
And then there was somebody last night who said that they found it on a 1797 tax parcel, which, again, over my head. But this will have great use, not only, you know, to help educate and to help people understand the history of our township, but in other things as we move forward. So thank you for all that work.
Yeah, so, you know, two things. His spreadsheet had about 75,000 columns, and I was trying to keep everything on one page for you. So I did keep what we thought was the most relevant information. One of the things we're kind of doing as we're ending this part of the project, you know, should we get funding for the next part, is building out the histories of the properties that we've designated 1 and 2. Now Ralph Thompson, a previous member of the Historic Commission, we have 10 binders, and he's done research on a lot of those properties. So Jeff is looking at the properties that he didn't research to kind of dig a little bit deeper on, because we have at least Ralph's scrolls on a lot of them. But yeah, our intention is to build them out. Dawn, actually, a fair amount of these houses sold recently, and she downloaded all the pictures from the realtor sites, so that we have that for the future. I know, pretty genius, huh? So yeah, that is the plan.
Yeah. No, thank you, thank you a lot for all this very difficult work.
The 1798 reference you made is a, there's a 1798 federal direct tax that somebody went out and took notes on every building in Pennsylvania. The detailed list for Lower Makefield is long gone. But we do know the value of every house that was assessed. And we can, I have done a spreadsheet where I can tell you the relative value of this house versus that house. But there's not enough detail to specifically say, it's A, it is this house. So that's why there's that confusion between what appears to be there in 1798, which could be anything on that 10, 20, or 50 acres at the time, and what the date is on the house. I don't mean to belabor this.
No, no, that's interesting. Thank you.
Hey, I'm here for it. Any other board comments or questions? No? Well, I will say, I'm really interested to see the report. Would love, I'm a map guy. So I'd love to see the maps and understand where these all are in space. And, oh, you got an email? Awesome, even better. Next, we're going to get a grant to make an interactive map, so we have like dropdowns and pictures that go with it, but that's-
We have that for Slate Hill coming very soon. Back to your dead bodies.
Nice. I just set it up for you and knocked it out of the park. That's what we're here for. So I, like I said, I appreciate the ongoing effort. It's a work in progress. We look to use the information for good, and to help educate our residents, and to, you know, make Lower Makefield that much better. So appreciate all the work, appreciate the State Historic Preservation Office, PHMC, all the work you're doing. Chef, of course, thank you for what you've done. And Historic Commission, you're all rock stars. So more to come, we know. But thank you for giving us this update. It's a long, long time coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night. All right. Mr. Marjuski, we have a couple items coming up on the floodplain management ordinance that the planning, I know the Planning Commission addressed these the other night. If you could give us a quick summary?
Yes. We have before you a request to authorize advertisement of a few ordinance amendments. For our floodplain management ordinance, we recently had a review done by the Insurance Services Office, who is working for FEMA, administering the community rating system program, of which Lower Makefield participates, to allow for a 15% discount in flood insurance rates through the NFP, the National Flood Insurance Program. As part of that, they identified a few things that needed to be tweaked in our ordinance to maintain that discount. And we went to the Planning Commission, discussed that, those ordinance changes with them. And briefly, they, they aren't really substantial, just a few clarifications on definitions for items such as substantial improvement, and what counts and doesn't count as far as things that can and can't be done to a house that's under construction. And then a few minor tweaks also, just to update for the most current code that we'll be doing. As part of this, we also recommend, currently, our floodplain management ordinance is buried within our zoning ordinance. Most towns have a separate standalone floodplain ordinance, a separate chapter of the Township Code. And I'm recommending, and the Planning Commission recommended, that we take that out of the zoning ordinance, put it as a standalone ordinance. It still has the same effect as it does now, only it's easier for people to find. I often get questioned, where's your floodplain ordinance? And I have to point them to Chapter 200-54 through 59, whatever it is, instead of just saying Chapter 114 of the Township Code. So this would create that standalone ordinance, similar to our stormwater management ordinance. And then we also have an amendment to repeal, those sections of the zoning ordinance would now be in the separate chapter, with the two minor little tweaks to our zoning ordinance to point you over to that Chapter 114. So when you go into our natural resources protection standards for floodplains, it'll tell you that you're not allowed to disturb stuff in the floodplain, except in compliance with Chapter 114 of our Township Code. And also, just to tweak a definition for floodplains to be consistent with FEMA and the floodplain management ordinance. So those are the two items. One, to authorize advertisement for the standalone ordinance with the changes as recommended by the Planning Commission. And the other item is to authorize advertisement of a zoning ordinance amendment. And I know our township solicitor needs to just tweak a few phrases on some of the, you know, those whereas clauses and everything. But substantively, this is the ordinance that would be advertised for adoption. I hope that was brief enough.
No, that's fine. So essentially, we have two different things to do, so we need two separate motions and two separate discussions.
Mr. Chair, I move that we authorize the advertisement of a standalone floodplain management ordinance to be consistent with the current requirements of FEMA's CRS system.
Second.
Mr. Marjuski, the only question, I flipped through it and listened to the Planning Commission discussion. The only question I had that I didn't see, and I may have just missed it, when it comes to critical infrastructure, like substations and stuff like that, there's an ASCE 24-24 that provides guidance in how to build, it's a little different from building a home in the floodplain or near the floodplain. Do we have any consideration of if a substation or anything else that might be considered critical infrastructure were to be built in our ordinance?
That's actually in the Township Building Codes. The International Building Codes now reference ASCE 24-
24 now, yeah.
24, yeah, okay. So that would be covered underneath that.
Okay, just want to make sure. Otherwise, yeah, changes are fine in my book. So any other?
Yeah, just one quick question. What CRS class are we now?
I don't recall the number. I'm thinking maybe 7?
I think it's 7, yes.
So 7. How hard would it be for us to get to 6 or 5?
We're actually having a visit from the Insurance Services Office in several weeks to go through and revalidate all of our points, and to look to see where exactly we are. They're constantly tweaking the points you get. So like, we do more and get more points, and then we lose points in other areas every time they look at it. And our goal is to look at what we could potentially do to maybe get to that next higher class.
Right. Because that gets us to 20%, or even if we could get to 25% flood insurance premium reduction, that would be huge.
And I think some of the things that we're looking into doing in the coming years may put processes in place that garner a significant amount of points that we may be able to go up. But we're, we're getting closer and making steps, and our goal is to achieve that higher discount rate.
Okay. Yeah, no, I've, this is an issue I've been a big sport, like, before I was here, like 2013. Because we, this is one of those things where if we do the right work, we can save people a lot of money. So definitely, yeah.
Quick question. If, let's hypothetically, if we ever get that federal money, you know, several million dollars, to do some stormwater management, floodplain management work, are there opportunities there to further improve our rating by doing that, those types of projects, in addition to this, the ordinance? Or would we have, is it mainly ordinance-driven?
No, it's not. It's a whole menu of items that can be, you can pick and choose from to gather more points.
Okay. Good to know. Any other board comment or questions? Any public comment or questions? Anyone online?
All the comments on the-
No, this is only on the current agenda item. All right, with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. 5-0.
And as you may recall, we recently adopted a new stormwater management ordinance.
Oh, I think we need another-
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I move that we authorize the advertisement of a zoning ordinance amendment to eliminate floodplain management requirements.
Second.
All right. So all this is doing, just for Claire, I think you already said this, but all this is doing is making things across our ordinance is jive.
Correct.
Right, okay. All right. Any other board comment or questions? Any public comment or questions? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Hearing none opposed, motion carries 5-0. Now we can do stormwater.
Okay. As you know, we recently adopted a new stormwater management ordinance. And currently, a lot of the things that were in our subdivision and land development ordinance have been pulled out, so that it's a separate standalone ordinance that's applicable to all sorts of projects, not just stormwater, I'm sorry, not just subdivision and land development. And this ordinance amendment is a reconciliation to repeal those provisions of SALDO that would be duplicative or in conflict with the newly adopted stormwater management ordinance. So we recommend authorizing the advertisement of this ordering, subdivision and land development ordinance amendment.
Second?
Second.
All right, we got a motion in a second. Madam Solicitor, have you had an opportunity to review? Are you all good?
We have, yes. And we revise, we made some revisions, and we'll work to revise it further, not materially, but for appearance sake, and submit them for advertising.
Perfect. Any other board comment or questions? All right. Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 5-0. Thanks, Jim. Engineers' report, we have the report in our packet. If you have any questions for our engineer, she's here in the back. Anything from anyone? No, we're good, all right. Managers' report. Mr. Kratz, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I just have one item this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I just have one item this evening to consider ratification and confirmation of my acceptance of a professional services proposal from Steel in the Air Incorporated relating to the existing cell phone tower at 1347 Woodside. For the benefit of the public, the township currently has a lease agreement, a communication site lease agreement with American Tower Corporation that was entered into initially back in, it's like, 1998, in which there was an initial term that was established as part of, part of that negotiation with, with American Tower or a predecessor of American Tower. The current term runs through, that lease runs through December 22 of 2028. So the American Tower, as the lessie, working through a lease management company called Next Tier LLC, has approached the township about the potential renegotiation of terms relative to the, to the lease agreement. There are options that are essentially lessie options within the existing lease in which they can exercise, but the base term again goes through, through 2028. And so discussions that we've had on this issue were to look at, there's a couple different options and structures that are being proposed by the, by American Tower Corporation. So the discussions were really to engage an expert, to try to advise the township on this matter, so that the township can position itself to get the most favorable terms to the township. And so, consistent with those conversations, we executed a proposal with Steel in the Air Incorporated at a, at a cost of $10,000. And we're, again, seeking ratification and confirmation of that, that action by the Board of Supervisors this evening.
Motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All right. Basically, we're spending a little bit of money to get some expert advice, so we can hopefully make a lot more money. Good summary, fair summary?
Yeah, that's a fair, that's a fair summary. The cost, I mean, just to put that in perspective or context, between revenue share and current monthly rent, it's, it's in excess of $20,000 a month that we receive. So, again, spending $10,000 to make sure that we're negotiating favorable terms and maintaining that benefit over an extended period, you know, makes, makes sense. So yes, it is the concept of spending a little money to make sure that we're positioned to negotiate in the most favorable way as we move forward.
Said much more eloquently than I did. Any board comments or questions? Any public comment? All right.
Excuse me, I'd just like to add, if you would permit me just to make a few small, minor changes or suggestions to the consulting agreement, there's some provisions in there that I would like to tweak or change ever so slightly, so.
Do we need, do we need to amend the, the motion, or?
No.
Can you do that as part of the process?
No, and the reality is, I have not, while I communicated back to Steel in the air that we were interested in engaging them for their services, I've not sent them back and executed a proposal or agreement, so they're, they're still, they're the ability to modify those.
So we're still pretty early?
Yeah.
Awesome.
So again, materially, conceptually, everything is the same, it's just minor tweaks.
That's.
Thank you.
That's what we want you to do, right? All right. I think we did all the comment stuff, so I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, 5-0. Public works?
Thank you very much.
Is he coming up? No Under Armour shirt today, Derek? What's going on? No Under Armour tonight?
No.
He's in the LMT pajama wear.
The official schwag, I like it.
Good evening, supervisors. Before you this evening, I have two items. The first item is in regards to the Cardinal Drive Tennis Court Reconstruction Project. This item is to consider change order number one from Keystone Sports Construction in the amount of $8,827.87. Just a brief, just some brief notes on this. If you recall, Cardinal Drive, we did a, almost like a design build with Keystone Sports. We've used them in the past, they're probably one of the premier court constructors. We did hire subsequent a design engineer just to finalize drawings. One item of the change order was, through design process, they recommended adding some reinforcement in the curbing around the courts. Keystone agrees. Obviously, that wasn't in their original scope. And another item that I brought forth would be the addition of a vehicular gate to access the courts for future maintenance. That also was not in the original scope of work.
I don't know, just again, for benefit of the board and the public, the original project estimate budget, or the original project budget was, I think, $400,000 that was allocated for this project.
Correct.
Even with the proposed change orders, the new contract sum would be a little over $275,000, so.
That's correct.
Still moved.
Second. Any board comment or questions? Any public comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Item B before you is the Highland Drive Drainage Improvements Project. This is to consider a proposal from HRG for construction phase services and construction observation services. That is a TNM proposal with a estimated cost of $50,000, with about 15 allocated to construction phases, which would be pre-construction meetings, all the submittal reviews, change order, work directive, construction management, invoicing. And then the construction observation would be the field staff to observe the contractor during the construction phase.
Get a motion?
Still moved.
Make the motion.
I'll second your motion.
There we go. Any board comment or questions? In your, your review of the collective review of the team here of the proposal, everyone's okay with all the terms and conditions and everything else?
Yeah, it would fall under the professional service agreement in place with HRG.
Okay, everyone's good with that. Any board comment or questions? Any public comment? All right, call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Solicitors, thanks, Derek.
Thank you, thanks, supervisors.
Madam Solicitor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The meeting, the minutes should reflect that the supervisors present this evening met immediately prior to this Board of Supervisors meeting, an executive session to discuss litigation matters, employment matters, and they touched upon real estate matters as well. My report is brief this evening, just a recap of, it was mentioned already, zoning hearing board last evening for 136 Old Oxford Valley Road. That approval was, variances were granted. Actually, there was a request for two variances that was, that was amended, the application was really amended during the hearing, and one variance was granted. So that is possibly moving before you sooner than later. And a recap of meetings for zoning hearing board that we will be attending on the 19th. I think you have instructed us to attend a few, so we have zoning hearing board meeting on August 19th, of which there are three applications that we will be participating and/or opposing, I believe. That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Supervisor reports, let's see, we already heard about the planning commission, so I have nothing to report tonight. Supervisor Lewis?
I have no report for tonight.
All right. Supervisor Ross?
I have no report.
Go on. Supervisor McCartney?
No report.
No report.
Look at that, all right. All right, no discussion items. Under other business, perhaps Mr. Kratzner, you could cover this very quickly.
Okay.
Not a real surprise. The Mooresville Municipal Authority put out a public notice that there's going to be, I believe they published their plan for the new facility.
That is correct, yes.
And we're going to be, I haven't seen the actual information yet, but I think once we get it, we're going to put it on our website, and there'll be an opportunity for the public to.
Yes, we actually, we actually got the, I guess, the approved PDEP notice of publication, again, that Mooresville Municipal Authority drafted and got reviewed by the department. It should be on the website, actually, now. So, and within that, within the posting on the website, there's also a OneDrive link in which documents relative to the project and the specifics on the project are accessible to, to the public as well, yes.
All right. And correct me if I misspeak, because it's been a while since we've talked about MMA and the new, the new facility, but even though we don't own the sewer system, our sewer goes, at least partially, to there.
Correct.
That, that new facility will.
Correct.
Some type of impact on our sewer rates, is that?
That, that is correct. I mean, ultimately, Aqua is the sanitary sewer provider will, you know, bear the cost associated with treatment that's occurring in that portion of the system. So again, there's a 30-day public review process. The one thing that, so the 30 days, we were actually ahead of it, the 30-day period actually commences, I think, upon the first publication of the notice in a newspaper of general circulation. So the information is on our website currently. What we will do is, once we determine when they're going to publish, we'll put the deadline for comment, we'll, we'll update the news post on our website to provide that information, so that people know the actual date in which the 30 period, the 30-day period ends for, for comment purposes.
Okay. And if, if this board wants to submit a formal comment as a board, we can organize that. I haven't looked at anything yet to see if we'd want to do that or not, but that's an option, correct?
Absolutely, yep.
And I guess the other thing, I think the, did you have something to say?
I was going to say, another business item, just.
Okay, yeah, I had one more quick.
Okay.
The other one, I believe the school district is having their public hearing on the new high school on September 4.
That is correct.
Obviously affects our residents, because those who attend public school go to the high school. We have invited the school district to give a presentation here as well, ahead of that. I'm not sure if they'll have time or not to do that, but something to look forward to at our next meeting, perhaps.
As we were sitting here, the superintendent did confirm that he's available and willing to come to, come to the meeting. So there, there is an email in your email box.
Another one.
Just on that issue for confirmation of date and sort of scope of presentation that, that, that you would like as, as a board.
Excellent, thank you for that. All right, Supervisor Lewis, sorry.
Yeah, I was going to mention that Representative Fitzpatrick recently wrote the EPA Administrator Zeldin about a proposed land development in Lower Makefield Township with specific concerns about stormwater management. And my suggestion is that we write to Administrator Zeldin and basically offer information about the land use, the proposed land use, and ask for any of their staff support if they wanted to provide additional review of that, in that we want to make sure that, obviously, we're under state law and the process around, we've talked about subdivision land development here, and we respect, you know, property rights, but we want to make sure that we're, if we can get the input from the staff of the EPA on anything, we'd certainly want to take that. Additionally, we might offer our new stormwater management, if they have thoughts on that as well, since this is certainly something that's of interest. And there's also another environmental issue that maybe we can address in the letter, if possible. Many folks might not recall that we still have a leaking pipeline in Upper Makefield Township, which does impact Lower Makefield residents. And we could maybe ask where we're at on that, and if he could be helpful on that. Again, anytime we can get the staff of the EPA to review any of the stuff that we do, that, I mean, that's, that would be awesome. So that would be my suggestion, if the board would be amenable to that. I don't know if that needs a motion or if that's, if it's by consent, or.
I like the concept.
Yeah.
Makes sense to me.
If you want to take the lead in drafting something, feel free.
I mean, I'm happy, I'm happy to do that as well, and circulate a draft and incorporate any comments that you have.
Okay, and it's, I believe, are we going through the region, I think, I watched the zoning hearing board meeting, and the representative from, from the, Representative Fitzpatrick's office mentioned the regional EPA. Would we send it to the regional office or to?
I think we could CC the, the regional office.
Probably headquarters and the regional office, I would imagine, yeah.
I believe he mentioned region four, but we're in the region three.
Yeah, that was mentioned last night, but yeah.
In Philly, actually. So yeah, I have no issue with that myself. Sounds like everyone's on.
Well, again, I'm happy to draft it and then circulate, and you guys can review and comment.
All right. Any other, other business? Any appointments to boards and commissions? I know we had Mr. Hines.
Mr. Chair, if I could appoint Mr. Robert Hines to the zoning hearing board?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any board comment or questions? None? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Do we have to specifically say that he's an alternate?
Good.
Is that we revise the motion to be?
Well, I think we sit in a unique situation right now, because today he'd be an alternate, but September he could be a non-alternate, because we will have a member who's leaving the township, so.
The current opening is one alternate, as it seems, today.
So we have alternates who, unfortunately, because of their careers, are never available. So we're trying to get an alternate who would be available. And in September, we'll need an actual full member.
Gotcha.
Based on that, would you suggest that we appoint him as an alternate now and then full member in September?
Certainly. What I don't understand about the alternates, I have not had a chance to speak with them, is are they unable to attend because they, they don't appreciate, not that they don't appreciate, but they think they're an alternate, and so they're not necessary. So I don't know if we should, like, have a conversation with them first to understand, are they interested in being full members, or just go forward with the Mr. Hines, because he's here and he has a, you know, an interest in.
So at present, the only vacancy, to your point, the only vacancy that we have listed is an alternate vacancy. I think if we, personal opinion is, if we appointed Mr. Hines as an alternate tonight, we then move forward with that conversation to see, because I believe we may be losing someone.
Yep.
Unfortunately, in the not-too-distant future.
I say it all the time, Peter's leaving us. Peter is leaving us, it's terrible.
I've been working with him for a long time, I'm going to miss him. So I think the, the best path would be to revise your, your amendment, your motion to.
If I could revise my motion to appoint Mr. Hines as an alternate member to the zoning hearing board, if that'd be acceptable to the second.
Second.
All right. I'll say it again, any board comment or questions? Any public comment or questions? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Welcome to the zoning hearing board, Mr. Hines. You don't have to just watch him on TV anymore. For better or worse. At this time, we have additional public comment on non-agenda items if needed. So like, item number five, I believe, if you have public comment on agenda items, please come to the dais or call in, state your name, whether or not you're township president, and please try to keep your comments to three minutes. All right, no one in the room? Anyone online or on the phone? All right. With that, I will say, have a great evening, and we are adjourned.
Farewell.
Yeah, not bad at all.